To ask Councilman Travis Chance, please leave us at our invitation and pledge.
Let us pray. Oh, Heavenly Father, we come to you today to thank you for another blessed day in our city. We ask that you watch over those of us in our city, our county, our state, and our country. We ask that you lead us and guide us in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin our meeting today, I would like to -- we have, for the first time in a while, had a request by the public to comment during our session today. And so, since I've been mayor, we haven't had that happen when somebody actually requests a public comment. So, I asked Ms. Sue Starling, our clerk, to share with me any kind of rules that we have regarding public speaking, because we really haven't had that issue up until this point, since January. So, I asked Ms. Sue to post our rules of order as regards speaking. Those were signed back in 2010. So, before we hit that part of the agenda on Agenda Item Number Four, I will bring that up, but I just wanted to make y'all aware of that. Okay? Agenda Item Three is a consideration of a motion to appoint Robert Cheshire as City Manager on interim basis. Do I have a motion from council to do that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from council? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would like to welcome Robert as our interim manager for the next six months. Congratulations. All right, go on to the public comment section, which is Item Number Four. I'm going to read the rules of public comment, and then we do have one citizen who has asked to speak, and that would be Mr. Bill Thomas. We have three spaces available for public comment. Like I said, we only have one person that has asked to speak today. Each space will have two minutes for a registered citizen to speak on any topic relating to the current agenda, and I'll ask Mr. Thomas to speak to which topic on the agenda that he would like to discuss when he comes forward. You know, I ask that you try to limit it to two minutes.
Yeah.
That's what we adhere to, or that's our guideline. Now, you know, we'll see. Mr. Thomas has registered, because we ask each citizen to register to speak prior to. So, having said that, I'll ask Mr. Thomas to come forward. One other thing I would ask you to do, Mr. Thomas, if possible, and you are speaking to council and to the mayor, so hope that you would write your comments forward during --
Yes, ma'am. I'll address the chair as appropriate under our rules of order and hope that there won't be any superfluous comments from other councils taking away from my time. Congratulations, Robert. I don't know why you want the job. We don't treat our city manager very well, and that is the topic of which I've chosen to speak on today. Like you, I take no pleasure in being here. You're alleging Mr. Parker last week. He's shameful. And in the same breath, after you lambasted and destroyed his character, fired him publicly, called him a bald-faced liar, you praised him for the great job that he did as City Manager. I was a little bit confused by that. Your suggestion that you could hire an attorney and pay him to be independent surprised me. I've never seen anybody hire an attorney and have that attorney turn around and incriminate him was surprising. I think probably the best way to do that would be to truly hire an independent investigator. I believe that the best in this state is the GBI. In a few short months, congratulations, in a few short months, you've managed to destroy morale, business and industry confidence in Statesboro, erased four years of progress, reestablished a hostile work environment in City Hall. You've continued the proud tradition of Statesboro, violating state law at will. I've seen a lioness displaying more compassion eating her young than I witnessed last Tuesday seeing you handle Mr. Parker. I hope you don't get treated that way, Cheshire. What surprised me even more than that is two city councilmen here admitted to violating the open meetings and attitude, then suggested that it was just a technicality that got us in trouble in the first place, and then went on to verbally attack the judge you came to that finding. A wise man commented to me last week that the best defense is a strong offense. You certainly put together a strong offense very quickly in attacking and attempting to discredit Mr. Parker. Your surprise at the suggestion of having broken the law was as convincing as the gentleman on Nancy Grace when Nancy told him that his abused son had been found in his basement. You were that convincing. It's time to restore Statesboro's faith and trust in government. It's time for a forensic audit conducted by the truly independent GBI, and then it's time for a special grand jury to be convened. I believe that most of you should be removed from office. Your conduct is shameful, and I'm disgraced to call you my city government. Thank you so much.
We're going to move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll give council a second to look over the consent agenda, and then I will ask for a motion to do so.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Name. Motion carries. Let's move to Agenda Item Number Six, which is a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2014-24, a resolution for the closures of the remainder of Crescent Circle and a portion of North Crescent. I will ask our interim City Manager, Robert Cheshire, to speak to that item, please.
Thanks, Mayor. If you recall, at the last council meeting, we actually had a public hearing, and that was to hear for and against those closures. Staff's opinion was that these particular closures are warranted because these areas of the streets, or sections of the streets, are really not utilized by the public anymore. Today, what you have before you is a resolution authorizing the abandonment and closure of those two streets. And the streets, again, are a segment of Crescent Circle and -- or it's actually the remainder of Crescent Circle and a portion of North Crescent. So, you're just voting for that abandonment. Then we would go, if you so choose to approve those closures, then we would move into the actual conveyance of the properties themselves, and we would follow the proper format for doing that. I did remember at the last meeting that you, Mayor, had received a letter from a nearby property owner who had some concerns with it. I called that individual and spoke with them, and they've since sent another letter once they got a little clarity on what portions of the road would be closed, and they were okay with it. And you should have. I think they gave you a copy of that letter.
You did.
And otherwise, I have not received any other comments for or against the closure. Now, some of you may have, but I have not.
And I want to bring up that the property owner, and I don't think that would make sense, I put it into the record at the last meeting, was Dr. Steve Chester and his wife, Deborah. And they had watched this over the years as, you know, the parking situation and everything, the church involved, et cetera, and have been involved with that discussion, and have come to a point that, you know, they're good neighbors. They care a lot about the neighborhood and the street, and came to the decision that it was actually a good move, and that they were okay with it. So, that's a citizen I just want to point out that has followed the process over the years. Is that not true, Robert?
Absolutely.
Do you have any questions from council? Okay. Do I have a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2014-24, a resolution for the closure of the remainder of Crescent Circle and a portion of North Crescent? Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Number Seven, consideration of a motion to adopt Resolution 2014-22, a resolution accepting the right of way of American Way, how appropriate this week, as a public street to be owned and maintained by the city of State. Where I had to invest to Mr. Cheshire, I was not familiar with American Way. And so, maybe you'd like to share with us exactly where that street is and the details involving this.
Yes, thanks. This particular street is located just at the intersection of Branton Avenue. It's right beside the new Parkers that you've seen going up, Parker's Convenience Store, which is located at the intersection of Branton and the bypass. What you have before you this morning, council, is, and this is the typical process, this was going to be required to be a city street because of other properties that it will serve, and they have to have access to a public street. The street went through staff, followed all of the review that was required. All the comments were always met. In this case, staff goes out and inspects the actual construction, knowing that it's going to be potentially a city street at some point. And as of today, it is, as far as staff is concerned, is ready for acceptance to become a city street, which would mean we would own and maintain it, and it would be known as American Way. So, my recommendation, staff recommendation, is to accept this as a city street.
Any questions from council? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2014-22, excuse me, 2014-22, a resolution accepting the right of way of American Way as a public street to be owned and maintained by the city of State.
I move that we adopt a Resolution 2014-22.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Sue, can you get some coffee for council?
Mayor, can I stay?
Sure.
And they have turned in their maintenance bond, and that is requirement. So, in essence, there's a year that there will be a warranty for that road. So, should it become a problem, we can ask the original developer to repair it, and if they don't do it to our satisfaction, we can draw against that maintenance bond if we so.
Thank you. Great. We'll go to Item Number Eight, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2014-23, resolution authorizing a contract with Avicii Technical College for the use of certain equipment in courses of study and firefighting and emergency services. Mr. William Turner is going to address council.
One minute. Congratulations, Robert. Basically, what this is, is this is a contract that's been negotiated. It didn't take too terribly long to get there. But I would like to congratulate Chief Brand in the Fire Department, and they had helped in. Dr. Lamar from Avicii Technical College dealt with a lot of issues with working out the ins and outs of this contract. But basically, what it is, it's a partnership between the city of State and the Fire Department, OTC. They're putting on firefighter one, it's a level one firefighter force, and they need our assistance and building for the use of equipment and things such as what they've done. They agree to work out a schedule based on the district's standard model and utilize our equipment. They will also pay for it. That's all in the contract. You can see there's a "then" there that shows those kind of details. And we're really happy with it. We've talked about this a long time, and it's finally here. And what it's going to do for us, it's going to allow OTC and the surrounding communities to put together a lot of students that we'll be able to pick from in order to hire firefighters in the future, and it'll also take a load off training those firefighters in-house with our Fire Department, any other Fire Department in the area that would choose to utilize or hire their students, which is going to be really, really good. Firefighter, we want to train applicants for us in the future. So, it's a big, big partnership, and I'm very proud of the work they've done, and just happy that it's here and you guys can get it through. That's basically it, and that should all be too long. You got any questions? If I can answer them, Dr. Lamar is here. She can answer.
We'll recognize Dr. Lamar, who joined us today on Sucker Row.
There she is.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
The city is excited about that relationship. Do we have any questions from council, for women? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2014-23?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions from council? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item Number Nine, a consideration of a motion to approve a professional engineering services contract with Parker Engineering in the amount of $35,000 to provide planning, design, and bidding services for improvements to Savannah Avenue between East Main Street and Gentilly Road. I'm going to ask City Manager Robert Cheshire to speak to this item, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, if council recall, at the last meeting, we brought before you a list of consultants that had turned in responses to our requests for qualifications and our recommendations and all its approval, we selected Parker Engineering for work. After that, we went back and tightened up the scope of services and really came back with what I think is not only a big scope of services, but a good price proposal that Wesley Parker, Parker Engineering, has submitted. So, that's what's before you today, is the actual awarding of that consulting contract. Just to give you a background on what this particular design will include, it will be items such as milling, removing the existing asphalt surface, prepping the cracks, and we're not going to remove the concrete, because that's what's underneath the Savannah Avenue. Savannah Avenue is a portion of what was originally, it was called Highway Eight at the time, but it was the DMT route that took you through Statesboro to Savannah, and that's why you see the same type of construction under West Parish Street. That's all the same thing. You're having the same problems on West Parish. We're going to start with Savannah Avenue and remove that asphalt. We haven't decided exactly what we're going to do as far as coming back up with asphalt, but I think we'll do some rimming of it. But we're going to leave the concrete base in place, but that will help from the riding, I guess, service way. But then, we're also going to do some traffic calming, some striking, redoing the sidewalks. We're going to redo the intersection of Savannah Avenue at Zadaraure as a part of this project, and redo and upgrade that signal if we badly need it. So, I think everybody, myself included, observed for some time, and our streets certainly have some issues, but we're going to use the resources that we have. I'm pretty excited about this project. I think it's going to be very, very visible, and it's going to continue to give us a type of roadway that we look, and it'll carry, it won't carry the same theme of the East Main, but it will have some similar pieces to it. If budget allows, we'll do what we can with it. There will be another contract left awarded, I hope, at the next council meeting, which will be the water sewer segment, because that actually, that work has to be done before we do this part, and that will involve some sewer linings, I believe, and some relocations and water maintenance. So, hopefully both of those contracts will be awarded here soon, and we'll get moving with that avenue project.
When was the concrete covered up on Savannah Avenue?
It's been, at least in my time, it was prior to 92, so it's actually fairly well considered.
I was just wondering, when I grew up on Savannah Avenue, it was concrete.
Okay.
I was wondering how long before, you know, it had been gone.
Yeah.
So, when, Robert, do y'all anticipate this project getting underway?
The actual construction?
Yes.
I'm not exactly sure. It's in the fiscal year 15, starts today. Construction-wise, I had it in the budget. Using 2007's philosophy, I had it in the budget for this current fiscal year. So, really, it depends on how quickly we get the design done, and of course, we got a more than other contract of the water sewer as well, and get those two moving. Wesley, would you have a feel for your design time? Where's the Parker, Parker Engineering?
Really need to coordinate with the water sewer place.
Yeah.
I'll give them a couple months to get their plans together, and I can coordinate with them.
Yeah.
And give us a couple, two or three months to put it together. And I thought a couple, did it out.
Hopefully by--
The beginning of the next year?
Yeah.
January 2015.
Yeah. I'd say water, we have, water sewer, we ought to be working on the streams and making up of it right now.
They've worked on some design, some design, sewer.
Right.
And then council ordered a contract to complete the sewer, and differ up traffic flow and buses, or something. But hopefully, a few months, we'll get there once the contract is working. It's a pretty nice project for us.
I was just kind of wondering from a resident's perspective, what they could expect, you know, disruption to begin, for what length of time?
There's not going to be a lot of VR in that property.
Okay.
The water section is actually, right now, the plan is to replace the water, put it on both sides of the road and sidewalks, so there's going to be a lot of disruption. I think Wesley, who lives in that area, is hoping he will never go south of VR.
We're going to have last of our yard. I promise you, it'll work hard.
I've already talked to most of them. I've got my work cut out for them. But we're going to--
That is, you know--
We're on a contract.
I was about to say, that's in your contract. Did you read the fine print?
Yeah. It's actually not even fine print. That was one of the things we were looking at, so we knew that there was going to be a lot of public relationships needed on this, so I look forward to Wesley's good job.
It's kind of like be careful what you wish for. All right. Do I have any questions or comments from council before I ask for a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve a professional engineering services contract with Parker Engineering in the amount of $35,000?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion from council? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's move to Item Number Ten, which is a consideration of a motion to approve a award of contract to White Delta in the amount of $22,194,09 for parish support brick paper crosswalks. And I was kind of, you know, kind of laughing a little bit on this, Robert, because we're really not laughing, but it seems like we've had this particular motion before at a different time. So, is this the, this is it right now, just going to make it happen?
That's right.
Okay. Well, let's hear it.
This location, Avicii Oriental, is West Main at South College. It's where we, probably been two years now, that we improved that intersection, but I think really well. There's that issue, a particular issue that keeps coming up. It's not a contractor. This project, myself, I think, looks great. It's one of the ones that we received probably some of its compliments on. But the crosswalks themselves, the brick pavers, which are a technique that we utilized during the East Main street scape, and they held up well, are continuing to fail. This is the second time the contractor went in. The first time, it repaired and made its expense, and again, we were there. We all came to the consensus on what we thought was causing it. It could be, you know, there's some discussion as to whether it's the type of traffic, the turning movements, the runoff. Could it be a material, base materials? Could it be the technique that the bridges themselves were installed? And I'll admit, as an engineer, this has frustrated me. I actually Googled this and saw it at other places, other cities, municipalities, communities that experienced some of the same problems. Again, I'm not pointing a particular finger at anybody, whether it's the contractor, the way it was put in, the materials. We're just stumped as a staff as to exactly what has caused it. So, this third time, and I am a believer, and staff will tell you, but I would say if you're not failing, you're not either trying. So, but if you're doing it three or four times, you're not learning either, and I put myself in that one. So, we've come up with, I think, I feel real confident, it's going to be a good solution, because I think we'll use it in other places. And what we're going to do is close the traffic for a short period of time, and when the traffic gets tight there, and so, we've learned our lessons in the past there on how to do it. We're going to fill the, we're going to remove the brick pavers and sand, go back with an asphalt, let it cure for a week or so, and then come back with a product which looks like brick and feels like brick, and I don't think the majority of people would even notice the difference. This is me and engineers and everyone that have been working on this long enough, we started to look at it, and I think it's the right thing to do, because what we have in place now is that deterioration can cause some devastation. We definitely don't want that as a city. So, this product, we've put in at another place, and we've been observing it now for a couple months, and it's holding up very well. I like the way it looks. I like the way it rise, and I like the way that it seems to be holding up. It's been utilized in Florida, and it's actually approved by Florida for part of the transportation, and they've been putting it in since 2006, and they had their problem. Check the references, and we're going to give this one a shot. And so, my recommendation is for White Delta to do as the contractor record on this one, they absolutely wanted to be a part of this solution, because they feel like this has maybe hurt their reputation some, or at least they're hearing some things, and have fallen, wanting to be a part of the solution, which they have been every step of the way. They gave us a good price, and so, our recommendation is 2019409, and that will be for White Delta to remove the brick, provide traffic control, remove the brick, remove the sand, prep everything that's there, and go back to the place. The asphalt, and the city will come back in on a separate contract and put down every brick they have. Sorry for the wrong explanation.
No, no, no. I like the wrong explanation, because we're going to put a sign up when we start construction on that that says, "We got this."
I'm not ready to go there yet, but I feel a lot better.
This is it. Three's a charm.
Marcus.
Any questions from council?
Hey, what's the schedule on this? We're looking at, do we have a date set, Marcus? If it is approved today?
Not yet. I don't have a schedule yet.
Right.
Where do you want to put for school?
That's correct.
Sometime this month?
Sometime this month, because we definitely want to get it before the school year starts, which is usually August one, August two for the schools. And the other work that we'll come back with and the place that will be done in the middle of night, so it'll start on Sunday evening. You'll go, you'll be on Sunday and come up Monday with a different look, and there'll be traffic, traffic can run off at that moment. That's what I was getting at, yeah. Good question. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Do I have a consideration of a motion to approve a word of contract to White Delta Inc. in the amount of $22,194.09?
Motion to approve. I didn't know that. Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Number Eleven is a consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a service delivery strategy amendment. Excuse me, I'm not going to ask for this motion today. We're not prepared with what we need to have to go ahead and do that, so I'm going to ask that we move forward to Item Number Twelve.
County's okay with all of it? County's okay with that?
Yes. Well, let me back up. Depends on how you define "okay." And I'll explain to the group, or to everybody here today, exactly what that is. Service delivery strategy amendment is our cooperation with the county in providing services jointly or not jointly. We just had a comprehensive plan update that everybody was required to do. You do that every five years. You do an overhaul of your plan every 10. You do an update on the interim five. And we're in that update period. Part of that update is to update your service delivery strategy document, and in this particular case, that update would have included annexation of properties into the city. It would have also included the Five Mile Fire District Agreement that was entered into a year ago, things of that nature. We had some concerns by council, and I think that one of those concerns was expressed by Councilman Britt, who was not with us here today, that he wanted to make sure that in signing that updated document with the county, that that did not prohibit us from being able to negotiate service delivery strategy going forward over the next five years prior to the next update in 2019. And so, what we're trying to do as a city, Robert has been involved with that. Our attorney, Alan Lee Hart, who was on vacation this week, and that's why he isn't here, has been involved with that, trying to make sure that when we do sign off on that, that we do not inhibit our ability to go forward and do some deliberation over the next five years. So, we are working diligently with the county to make sure that everybody gets what they need. Their document is signed, that we're satisfied in signing that. We haven't inhibited the city in any way, or in any business with the county, negotiated with the county over the next five years. So, that's what we're in the process of doing, and I appreciate you asking that, Councilwoman Boyer. And hopefully, at our next meeting, which will be the 15th of July, we'll have the documentation necessary for council to consider, a motion to pass, so that we'll be able to move forward on that. Do I have any questions for council? Item Number Twelve, other business from city council. I'm going to ask Jeff Grant to comment on our Fit by Fifteen Initiative, and let me just say, I don't know. We can go ahead and table that.
Okay.
Item Number Eleven, I don't know that we had to do that.
We'll leave it at that, sir.
Okay. In an effort to pull disclosure, I have not met with Jeff yet to get my Fit by Fifteen bracelet, which will track my every move. You know, I don't know if I could, like, put a tire wheel, or just put it by itself on a step thing and let it run. You know, that's something that you and I will discuss later. I've just been really busy, Jeff, that's why.
No, that's fine.
I haven't been by to get my-- Fit by Fifteen bracelet. I haven't been by to get my Fit by 15 bracelet and, you know, I've asked Bryant to make sure that all that information and data generated by that does not, you know, fall into the sunshine wall.
True, true.
Or anything, but anyway, go ahead and update us on Fit by 15.
All right, Fit by 15, Health and Wellness Challenge is underway. We have about 62 employees, that's including Parkers, as well as our council, that's participating in this initiative. For those of you who don't know, basically, these individuals have been issued a Fitbit, which is a leading fitness track parent market. And basically, it measures your distance, which you, which you went, miles, active time from which you've been active, steps that you've taken, calories burned, it records that food intake, and also as well as water intake. Very easy, employees wear the Fitbit, anywhere that they walk into a room where there is a USB that connects with it, it actually uploads it down immediately. So what you see right here is basically the list of everybody who started in the competition, our fearless purchasing director, Darren Prather, is in front.
Darren, raise your hand to be recognized.
Darren, right. He's a good man, so.
He does a benefit, he's up at 4:30 every morning.
He did some work this morning, so I think the cool thing is, we actually met last week and did an info session with the employees, they're all excited about it. We've done over 1.2 million steps already in one week. So I think the biggest thing in terms of purpose, the purpose is really just to build community, health and wellness, and of course, have fun. That's the ultimate goal of everything. And hopefully, long term, we'd like to see this tied into our health plan and maybe create some type of incentive to keep this program continuing going on. So that's pretty much it. We're really looking forward to it. This is today.
This is number four.
Number four is, well, I'll have to actually pull that up. I'll have to pull it up for everybody on the spot. This is the leaderboard here.
So on day one, Darren has just been out walking around, walking.
Number four is our payroll rep, Anthony Hirstel. And then, oh, Phil, look at Phil, Phil's in there, Phil's very active, Phil is number five, and he's number five with steps already.
Is that why you keep leaving the meeting? What I mean is, that's what's going on here.
So.
Now that I was going to comment on you leaving in the bill or anything, but now it's sort of, it's all coming clear to me.
Trucy Polo's delivering tickets to Splash, doesn't it?
Okay. This competition will last for six months and we'll be issuing files weekly and monthly. But without, I mean, last but not least, I do want to recognize, uh, Lydia Sarlin, she's one who's kind of, she's coordinated these efforts with the Health and Wellness Challenge, so really appreciate her and the HR staff for working on that. And that's it. And I need to track down a few of you guys before you leave.
Ready?
Yes.
I was going to say, as long as you don't have to weigh in.
No weighing, no weighing. That's a game, right?
The tracking is private, right?
Pardon?
The tracking is private.
Yes, that is all, it is all private, it is not a DPS, it does not track you where you're going.
I live backstage, it tracks them, they don't choose.
Yes, right. That's correct. So.
Does anybody have any other comments or questions for Jeff regarding Fit Bit 15? Okay, do I have any other business from city council that they would like to bring forward at this time? Okay, we'll move to our last item, which is agenda item 13, which is public comments. We've had Mr. Phil Thomas request to speak to council formally, and I would like to remind Mr. Thomas to try to keep his comments at two minutes. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak before you. I love to see the city restore the three-minute concept of this public forum, I think two minutes is pretty quick, you know, three minutes is service, but I would like to conclude my remarks today, directed north at the citizens of the City of Statesboro now than to you, Ms. Mayor. What we've witnessed are the first several blows and the alignment of mayor into the brick camp. The wives will notice in the future a departure of more valuable employees, and I think those will become evident over the next few weeks, and an increase to taxpayers of nearly a million dollars by signing the current service delivery agreement. My advice for the citizens of Statesboro is to keep a wary eye on the left hand while watching the magic of the right hand. I'll be focused on hackers' clubhouse and the continued illegal work, public work on private property. That's been an issue in the past, and I think it will be continued, it will continue to be an issue, and I hope we make the right decisions as it would be for our public. We've already done some work there that was illegal. We've also had some illegal meetings, and I hope we clean up our act. I think that one honest, honorable citizen tried to point that out and tried to nudge mayor and council back on the path that we should have been on and we should have maintained, and I think what we saw was a shameful public wrenching of that employee and an assassination of his character. That will conclude my remarks today. Thanks for the opportunity to come before you and speak to me.
Last item is a consideration of a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion, a consideration of a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.